I'm going to call this meeting of the City of Salem Urban Renewal Agency to order for September 14th. The recorder would please call the roll.
Board Member Kazer?
President.
Board Member Anderson?
President.
Board Member Nanki?
Here.
Board Member Leung?
Here.
Board Member Osik is absent. Board Member Hoy?
Here.
Board Member Nordike?
Here.
Board Member Lewis is also absent. Chair Bennett?
Here. Councilor Nanki, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very much. Any additions or deletions, Councilor Hoy?
No.
Okay. I don't have anyone signed up for public comment on urban renewal. So the consent calendar.
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second by Nanki.
The consent calendar includes item 3.1A, the draft URA minutes from 8/24/2020. Item 3.3A authorizes an exception to the North Gateway URA grant guidelines and allows staff to execute and amendment to add them to an agreement with the Innovative Manufacturing and Design to relocate equipment purchased with North Gateway URA grant funds to the McElchrist URA. And that concludes the consent calendar.
Discussion, Councilor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, my discussion is on 3.3A. And what I read it to be is that we had a company that was in one urban renewal district that we helped very much. They were successful, and they were so successful, they want to move to another urban renewal district before the equipment that, I don't want to take their equipment with them, and they've got a couple more, a year or two more on their equipment. So this is a success story. That's how I read it, and I just want to confirm that from Director Rutherford.
Yes, Kristen Rutherford, Urban Development Director. That's exactly right. IMD is in the North Gateway Urban Renewal area. There is equipment that they use in their operations that we provided grant funding to help them acquire. Our grant guidelines have sort of a capitalization schedule that precludes removing equipment from an urban renewal area prior to defined time without paying back a prorated portion of that expense. In this situation, it is a success story. They want to expand. They can't do it in the location where they currently are. They have found a spot in a different urban renewal area and would like to take the equipment with them. It's, this is a pretty unique situation and not one that we've encountered before, but certainly want to support our businesses in their expansion and growth and in staying here in Salem. So this, by supporting this waiver to our policy, this will allow them to move that equipment and use it in their new location.
Well, good on you, Director Rutherford, and good on the, the, the company there for their success. And I'm glad we could help them achieve that.
Great, thank you, Councilors. Thank you, Ms. Rutherford. Councilor Nanki?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And I talked with Councilor Hoy yesterday about this one because I was concerned that, you know, all of our urban renewal areas are separate. And I wasn't going to pull it, but since Councilor Anderson yanked it up in discussion wise, is there not a means for down the road for us to put some pieces in play that if, if someone moves from one urban renewal area to another, that then that new urban renewal area could pay for the balance of those funds? Because North Gateway is not going to actually be receiving the benefit of, you know, the balance of the grant funding inside of their own boundaries.
Well, unfortunately, the way that the statute is written regarding urban renewal is that funds can only be expended within that urban renewal boundary. So we can't backfill North Gateway or any other urban renewal area from the urban renewal area that a business is moving to. The funds have to be used and expended within that.
But, and that's kind of what I'm saying. If there was not a grant program in all urban renewal areas, could not that benefit that's moving into that pay for the balance of those, those grant dollars?
In this situation, the funds have already been expended.
Okay, so it's as expended at the, so it's like accrual?
Right, it's been expended. Equipment was purchased, and under our current policy, if, if we don't approve this waiver, then the company would have to pay back a prorated amount of that grant.
Correct. Okay, I'm just trying to make sure that all our URA's stay whole and that, that the benefits that they, you know, pay for are realized inside of their boundaries.
Understood, yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilor Nanki. Anyone else? All right, we have a motion on the table to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor will be, say aye to the recorder.
Board Member Lewis is absent. Board Member Leung?
Aye.
Board Member Anderson?
Aye.
Board Member Nanki?
Aye.
Board Member Kazer?
Aye.
Board Member Osik is absent. Board Member Hoy?
Aye.
Board Member Nordike?
Aye.
Chair Bennett?
Aye, okay, motion passes. Let's see. Do you have any information for us? Ms. Rutherford, do you want to share, or do you want to move along?
I don't have anything else for you.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Then I will adjourn this meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency and call to order the meeting of the Salem City Council for September 14th. If the recorder would please call the roll.
Councilor Kazer?
President.
Councilor Anderson?
Likewise.
Councilor Nanki?
Here.
Councilor Leung?
Here.
Councilor Osik is absent. Councilor Hoy?
Here.
Councilor Nordike?
Here.
Councilor Lewis is absent. And Mayor Bennett?
Here. Additions, deletions? Nope? Yes? No? Okay. Counselor comments? Councilor Nordike?
Hi, good evening, Mayor, and my peers on City Council. I have three updates for you. Number one, the wildfires. Over the weekend, I met with representatives of the United Way, Red Cross, Flimet Valley Community Action Agency, Marion Pope Food Chair of Marion County, and Salem Leadership Foundation at the Fairgrounds, which is the major evacuation site for wildfire evacuees, to discuss how best to support our evacuees. I also helped sort donations and translate for Spanish-speaking persons at the United Way Resource Hub. Any evacuee in the area is welcome to go to the United Way Resource Hub, which is a pop-up donation center at 1705 Silverton Road Northeast to pick up food, bedding, and other supplies. If you're interested or don't, in donating or volunteering your time for United Way, please check out their website or Facebook page because this is a very fluid situation, and the list of items they need donated changes seemingly by the day, sometimes by the hour. I also checked in with Arches. As we all know, the air quality in Salem right now is absolutely atrocious, and we need to help our unsheltered residents get out of this horrific weather. When I spoke to Arches on Sunday, they were between deep cleanings of their dayroom, which they have reopened for the purposes of getting people out of the smoke. And Arches would like to remind us all that because of COVID, their shelter bed capacity has been cut nearly in half. They have to spread people out and can't pack people in like sardines because of the pandemic. This is just yet another, another incredible component and incredible year, to put it gently. So they are going to need at least 225 beds available to get people out of the elements. So they need volunteers as well for their day center, for their dayroom, and also for their emergency overnight shelter at First Presbyterian. So you'll want to contact Arches to volunteer or to support their efforts. My second update has to do with masking up. I just want to remind everyone to make sure to follow those Oregon Health Authority and CDC guidelines and wear a face mask when it is necessary under those deadlines, excuse me, guidelines. You know, you don't have to believe in the virus to get the virus. And if you don't follow the guidelines, you are putting yourself at risk. You're putting your loved ones at risk, and you really are putting the rest of us at risk too. And I would also remind folks that the more COVID cases we get, the longer our kids will remain out of school. Remote learning is going to be a huge challenge for all of our students, but particularly our special needs students and English learner students. And there are real mental health consequences to being siloed from your friends, your teachers, your coaches, and your counselors. And also, the more COVID cases we get, the greater the risk of our restaurants and other locally owned businesses shutting down, maybe even for good. So please, wear a mask and follow those guidelines. And then last but not least, I'd like to talk briefly about the protests that we recently had. Those of you who have been following my social media posts or my prior comments at council meetings know that we have already seen enough swastikas, antisemitism, transphobia, and racism within the last year to last a lifetime. But just last week, videos emerged of protesters being beaten and maced at the Capitol. Each of us has a right to peacefully protest. None of us has a right to attack someone simply because we don't agree with what they believe. Hate is not welcome in Salem. As I'm sure many people already know, Salem City Council doesn't have authority over state property or the Oregon State Police. We can't tell OSP how to do their job, who OSP arrests, or who is released from jail. But we can insist upon a full reporting of what happened from the Salem Police Department's perspective, who was present at the protests as well. I know that not only myself, but our community would like to see a full report of what happened. We want people to be able to safely use all of our public spaces. So I look forward to seeing that full report when it comes out. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say a couple of quick things. I just wanted to acknowledge the profoundly difficult time our community is in right now. The wide community, all the way, you know, the canyon is part of the Salem community. North, or South Clackamas County, North Marion County, that whole, you know, we're one big community, and we are all profoundly impacted. Luckily, residents of Salem weren't as directly impacted as some of our friends are, but I have seen so many good things come out of this tragic situation where people have come together in order to help our community. And that really is a beautiful thing in this really, really difficult time. And we've had loss of life, loss of property, and, you know, it's in the middle of a pandemic, and, boy, people are just going through difficult times right now. And I just would hope that everybody could stop and think about each other and think about what everybody's going through, whether you're directly impacted or not. Just the smoke and the haze alone are a direct impact on all of our residents. It's been very difficult in Salem these past, this past week. And I also want to underscore what Councilor Nordike said about the protests. The, you know, I go to, I love, love to go to protests when I feel passionate about something, but violence and just outright attacks, that's not protest. That's just, that's criminal behavior, and it's not okay, and it's got to stop. And I look forward to hearing from the chief on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Anderson.
Thank you. We're all starting to sound like broken records here, I guess, because I had in mind to speak to some of the same things that my counselor cohorts have said. But I do want to indicate that maybe it was just a Freudian slip calling guidelines deadlines on the masks because if you don't wear, if you don't follow the guidelines, they may cause your deadline. But let me go in reverse order of what Councilors Hoy and Nordike were talking about. The, the fire situation is very bad, and we all need to work together. And I will tell you, it does affect us personally because this last week, I've had six people at my house, one from up the McKenzie Valley and four from down, five from Medford area who have been evacuated out of their, out of the house. So we all are a big community, and, and we need to work together as much as we can. The second thing I want to talk about that wasn't talked about before is the religious events that have gone, had taken place in, in Riverfront Park. I know that's caused a lot of consternation in terms of non-social distancing, not following various guidelines, and it's on city property. So I met earlier this week with the city manager and with Chief Moore to discuss this and the next item. And I'm hoping that City Manager Powers can address a little bit the concerns about the religious gathering in the park. And then I completely share what councilors Nordike and Hoy have said about the violent protest. And, you know, it sickens me and angers me to see this. And I really, what I saw, not there, I've been at many of the protests and spoken at a lot of the rallies, but I wasn't at this one over the last weekend. But what I see on the social media is Proud Boys attacking Black Lives Matter people completely, I can't say they're unprovoked, but it's completely uncalled for. And as a former criminal defense lawyer, I look at the charges misdemeanor assault, which is fourth degree assault. And it sure looks to me, from what I saw, that it's deserving of higher charges, assault in the, in the third degree or second degree in terms of intent and in terms of damage caused. But I do know that this happened on the Capitol Mall. Capitol Mall is not the City of Salem's jurisdiction. It's the Oregon State Police's jurisdiction. But I do want to say that what I saw and what I have heard from the chief is that it was the Salem police officers who, who stopped this and arrested the people who were, you know, disturbing violently the civil rights of other demonstrators who were there. And, but it is the Oregon State Police who do the charging. So I've asked the city manager and the chief of police if they could comment a little bit about what happened there with the assaults and with the Proud, Proud Boys and Black Lives Matter. And I'm hoping that, you know, we as a community can do everything we can to ensure that this doesn't happen and continue to happen. And we have a slightly different situation because of the state Capitol here. And that's going to take a lot of good coordination between the various law enforcement agencies at the city and at the state.
Thank you, Tom. Councilor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to reflect similar concerns regarding the wildfires. And, and being immediate past president of the Watershed Council wanted to thank staff for their efforts in maintaining the quality of our water supply and protecting Garen Island and, and keeping people up to date. And then I received several emails from people who thought our water was unsafe and corrected them. I know at least two members of our Watershed Board have lost their residences, as well as other friends and acquaintances of mine up in the canyon as well. So it's, it's truly horrifying what, what people are going through and the reports that we're seeing coming down. Whatever people can do to assist and, and help people through this crisis is very much appreciated. We, we still have a ways to go to get through this crisis as well. So I wanted to thank staff for the, the reporting that we've been getting on a regular basis and, and for all the assistance we're giving outside of the Salem City limits to those who are currently in need.
Councilor Kazer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I echo the comments of all the, my other fellow councilors. On the wildfires situation, it's, it's heartbreaking. I grew up in the Sublimity State and area, right on the, you know, gateway, if you will, to the Saniam Canyon. And know a lot of people affected and helped evacuate some of my own family there and then also near Scotts Mills. And I almost have no words. It's devastating. I think when we actually all physically get up, there will, I know I'll be in tears the first time I travel that corridor again. It's, it's also a really long road to recovery. This is something that's going to be years, decades to recover from. This is not just a six months later and we're done with it and everything's fine. This is, this is like a generational comeback. And that, the canyon cities are going to need a ton of support in, in the people there. And I, I don't know exactly what that means for Salem, but I, I hope that residents here who haven't lost their homes, who maybe have never lived in those areas, really understand that, that we are part of this broader community, and there's going to be people hurting for a really long time and to be very cognizant of that. To that end, I, I, I'm very concerned about misinformation I see being spread on social media from, from all political spectrums. And that's very disheartening to see. In times where I see people coming together, I also see people just, they're just passing along the thing because it looks funny or because it fits their political narrative, and that just doesn't do anybody any good. And I really hope for everyone who's watching that you will not just pass along something because it fits your worldview, that you'll actually fact check yourself and just stop and think before you just post something. Because those posts and clicks, even though you're sitting at home, it can, it can really impact people. And, and you need to acknowledge that and, and own it and be responsible for what you do online. So I really encourage people to take that seriously. I'm encouraged by how our community has come together and by everyone's work to, to help everybody. It's, it's amazing to see that. I hope we can sustain it. We're under a lot of pressure. There's a lot of stuff that we're doing, not just for wildfire response, but for COVID response and, and with, with civil unrest. I mean, there's a lot of things happening. We're, we're at, we're, we're under a lot of pressure. And we all need to, to remember and be, and, and have grace with one another as well. So that's the other thing I wanted to just, to mention. Regarding the protests on Labor Day, right before, actually, the, the day of really, the wildfires started, that's another thing. I was just disheartened and shocked and angry by what I saw. As much as I think the, it's, it's easy to try to make things appear more, more this or that, and or or, there's nuance here in what happened on Monday as far as jurisdiction, law enforcement jurisdiction, who can make arrests versus who does charges versus who runs the jail. I think all of those things are really important to understand. And before, before you get online and you start making comments about Salem PD and our role in it, I think it's helpful to try to understand about jurisdictions. As, as bureaucratic as that seems, it's really important to understand also. And, and I know that can be very complicated. I'm really proud of how Salem PD was able to come in and assist and really stop the violence. I think if we hadn't, it would have continued. I think somebody could have been very hurt or even killed in that way. So I'm proud of that, that work, knowing that we were there to really stop it. I don't think that that has really been communicated to the public yet, just, just how bad it was until Salem PD got involved. And I'll be interested in hearing more from, from the chief, I think, on that.
Thank you very much, Councilor. Councilor Anderson?
Thank you. Just a brief follow up to all of that. And it really relates to the, the dissemination of information that is not true. City Manager Powers has been sending us on the council almost a daily update about, here's what's going on in the fires, here's what we're doing, here's how we're handling it. A very good report. And I've been posting that on my council Facebook page just as it came in. And so I'm wondering, Mr. City Manager, if that, your, those sort of reports, they don't have to be directly like they are sent to us, but some sort of reports on an update can be published on the city website on an easily accessible basis every day. In other words, when you send one to the council, if you could send it posted in the public so the public could see it, because I've been getting nothing but, oh, this is so good to get real information and to hear from the source as opposed to whatever I hear on the blogosphere. So I don't know if you can do that, Steve, but if you could, that'd be very helpful. Then finally, Mr. Mayor, on a personal note, you know, we've been all talking about the anguish and the hurt and, and so many precious things have been lost to so many people. And I, I know you're one of those people, and you lost your place up, up the canyon. And I want to express my sympathy, and I know the whole council has sympathy for that and for what you're going through. And so you really have a, a, a gut reaction and empathy for what is going on with people.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor. Yeah, I, I do, I, I, in my twenties, bought a place up in Gates on the North Saniam River about 45 years ago. And we lost it during this fire. It burned flat to the ground, except for a chimney we always thought would fall over, which continues to stand to this day. And then another place that we had purchased next door also burned. It's very, very, very sad. I haven't been up there yet to see it. I am not, I am very much, I really hear Councilor Kazer's comments on this. This entire area where this fire has burned over from Molalla down to the McKenzie is my old legislative district when I was in the legislature. That whole area burned over. And I know a lot of people up and down that, that, those various timber communities. And I know what a horrendous loss this is. And, and Councilor Kazer is calling it right. It's going to be a generational problem for those communities. To lose hundreds of homes in towns of a few hundred people is a, is a startling thing to have happen. I, I don't think any of us can really appreciate unless you've lived up there or have friends up there. And, and then just on a real personal level, one of my dearest friends, Georgia Tia, is missing up in the Alcorn. We're waiting still on hearing about him. So it, it's a fairly raw subject. I, I also want to associate with the councilor's concerns about the level of information, misinformation, violence, purported violence, potential violence, all the rest of it that seems to occur a lot more in the, online than it does in the real world. And I want to particularly join Councilor Kazer in thanking our police department for, again, doing another outstanding job in the face of some of the most, I think egregious criticism I've seen. I, I tell you, the one thing, if I'm watching all this, that bothers me the most has been the denigration of those services by members of the public, by supposed leaders in various parts of the community. I, I think it's kind of time, and I think that's something a lot of councilors are talking about, sort of let's lower the rhetoric here a little bit. I, I know for myself, I've tried very hard to stay out of the rhetoric of this because I think most of it is overcharged and inaccurate. But I, I hope we can kind of all just calm down a bit and sort of move forward on this. We certainly have enough on our plate, the whole range of issues we're facing to keep us all real busy. So anyway, I appreciate, appreciate all of your comments. I think they're, they're really well taken. Councilor Leung?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to be repeating a few things from other councilors, and I'll just give a few other updates as well. So the last two Fridays, through a partnership that we've, my nonprofit had with Marion Pope Food Chair, we distribute food boxes to the community. Only question that we asked folks was just how many people in your household? So if people were picking up food boxes for other people, we didn't question that, just tell us the number of people in general. I don't have the numbers from our food boxes from September 11th, but on, on September 4th, we served 81 households or about 374 individuals. And that was just within a two-hour timeframe. And I could tell you offhand from the September 11th food distribution that there was a large number of people who came, especially near the end. So hopefully, I'll be able to have those numbers by the next city council meeting. have those numbers by the next city council meeting. Um so I just wanted to remind folks who are needing access to food, Marion Polk Food Chair is still distributing food at various distribution sites. Some are closed though because of the fire and the smoke. Um so you might want to check to make sure which ones are open. Also, the free lunch program that is happening at Salem Kaiser Schools and also surrounding um school districts, that is still happening as well. So make sure to please pick up your to-go meals. They don't ask any questions other than asking you how many uh bags you need to, to take care of family. And as far as I know, the maximum is ten um for, so if you need, if you were picking up some for yourself and maybe for a friend or two, you're welcome to pick up up to ten bags uh for your family. Also, if people need other resources, just two-on-one. Um I also wanted to acknowledge some of the leadership that we've seen specifically within our local businesses, like Epilogue Kitchen and Cocktails, for example, all weekend worked alongside with Taproot Lounge Cafe, King's Kitchen, several others, to distribute food to the community. Um this week, they are still doing that, specifically Taproot Lounge Cafe and King's Kitchen are still providing uh food. Um let's see, both evac, I'm reading um one of their Facebook posts, um both on uh being to those who are evacuees who are being housed and also host families and host families. So they could just contact Taproot by email at taprootcafe@gmail.com, King's Kitchen, and please order from them normally and them know if you're an evacuee or a host family. Uh so those are just still options for people who are still needing support, especially if you're looking for a uh prepared meal. Um in addition to echoing something that um earlier that several counselors had mentioned, um United Way, the Mid Willamette Valley, Arches is needing support, but there's also Picoon that also needs support too. Specifically, if you have access to masks, to gloves, to sleeping bags of all sizes, even to tents of all sizes, like people are still in need. So if there's any way that people could donate to any of those organizations, be much appreciated. Um to also highlight a little bit about distance learning, that is something that I'm, my family is actually starting this week. And um we've been getting mixed um messages in terms of how difficult it's, like when we're actually starting. So that's been a little bit frustrating. And so my family is actually now supposed to be starting on Wednesday with um distance learning. And um just wanted to highlight, you know, that the struggle is not only gonna be happening with our English language learners, but it's also with our, our unsheltered or homeless community, um especially our families who may not have access to the internet, also to families who have development disabilities, like that the struggle for them is gonna be very different and very real. Just want to highlight and acknowledge those are some of the struggles that will be ongoing. And the last thing I also wanted to highlight, um actually during um Labor Day weekend before the fires took place, there was a plates-not-hate event that took place on a Saturday. And it was um organized by several downtown businesses and was an opportunity to kind of go business-to-business, hop, hopping over and getting something free to try out some of their food. Um I only had a chance to go to both, um I think it was actually uh which one, Archive, where I got some really good tasting lemonade. So that was wonderful. And they also had some iced tea. I also went to Epilogue for some of their um dishes as well, which was wonderful. Um and just highlighting and recognizing, you know, there were um things that had happened over the weekend. Um specifically, there was a reporter and a W uh Will, uh Willamette University student that was attacked, um as well as a few weeks before, where there was another individual who, when they were um in their car and they were driving and um other group had unfortunately um maced the, the car and their windows were down. So a child that was sitting in the car had pretty much had um had maced, had maced. And um I spoke with the family briefly um during the plate-not-hate event and um checked on how the child was doing. And uh a parent mentioned to me that the child still feels traumatized and is scared. So I just want to acknowledge, you know, that we, we cannot keep on having this hate going on, especially in our community. I mean, hate doesn't belong in Salem. Hate has no place in Oregon. And, you know, I really want to acknowledge and ensure that, you know, going forward, that the council um also recognizes that um when it comes to racism, it is a public health crisis and it's affecting us in more ways than one. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Mr. Powers, do you want to talk a little bit about our water, police, other, any other issues you'd like to?
Uh certainly, Mayor. Thank you. And, and thank you, counselors, for, for the comments. And certainly uh the fire has, has shown how interconnected we really are, whether it's a, a personal or family loss, uh as in my case, others, or whether it's uh our city family, where over two hundred city employees have been impacted by the fires, either uh directly or through the various evacuation levels. Uh quickly, because I do want the Chiefs, First Chief Moore and then Chief Niblock, to provide uh updates to you uh quickly, though, on the parks that was requested by Counselor Anderson. Uh we have and we will continue as, as a city uh to tell uh people who contact us, uh tell people who we interact with as staff in the city parks of the uh mask and social distancing requirements. Uh clearly, uh some of the recent events, uh the uh participants were fully aware of, of the, of the requirements and chose, chose to ignore those. And I will, I will provide some detail to council, a, a written report uh on options that have been uh reviewed by staff. And I will share those uh with you. It is, it is a, a challenging issue. Uh we are attempting to uh comply with Governor Brown's uh directive to educate and inform uh rather than cite. Uh it's very challenging. On the uh protests, I have asked Chief Moore uh to provide a, a report uh to council regarding the events of Labor Day, uh the events that have been referred to that occurred on the Capitol Mall and the Capitol steps. So Chief Moore, please. And then I'd like Chief Niblock, Mayor, to, to provide an update on, on fire. And we also have other staff available if, if counselors, if the mayor, you want to uh have more detailed questions such as on our water or other uh parts of the city's uh response to the uh Beechey Creek Fire. But first, I would like Chief Moore to speak to the uh Labor Day protests.
Chief? I can give you, Mayor, Counselor, counselors. Um Jerry Moore, you're Chief of Police. Uh I think you all know me well enough uh to know that uh the events uh that occurred on Labor Day at the Capitol Mall uh are unacceptable. And uh I will tell you, our officers feel the same way. And that is why they interceded as quickly as they did to try and uh put those uh uh events to rest uh immediately. Uh I'll just give you uh a few facts if I could. Uh you know, we are probably in month three of um assemblies and events and protests, uh many of which have occurred at the uh, uh at the state capitol. Uh many of those have been, uh most of those have been peaceful. On occasion, uh that hasn't been the, the case. I think when you get people uh from uh diverse views of our world that show up, there's always some arguments and um yelling. Uh most of them have been peaceful. Uh on the, on the uh seventh of September, uh we were in fact uh present that day uh because we were aware that there was going to be a march uh that was going to occur on some city streets. Uh we, we deployed our uh portion of our traffic control unit and our mobile response team uh to make sure the um uh participants in the march were safe and traffic issues were uh mitigated. Uh and that is why we were on the scene. Um as has been uh stated by many of the counselors, uh we do not have jurisdiction uh over the Capitol grounds for a variety of offenses. Uh but I will tell you, when we see assaults and uh issues like that, uh we are certainly going to take uh action. Um that was the case on this particular uh occasion. Uh arrests, uh we did take people into custody. Uh they were turned over to the state police to uh investigate and make whatever arrests they thought were appropriate. We've had a longstanding um uh working relationship, great working relationship with the state police. Uh and we continue to have discussions about uh their presence uh on when events occur at the Capitol grounds, and those will continue to occur. Uh I, I will be reaching out with, to the superintendent to discuss um our mutual um approach to the events that occur uh when they also involve city streets. And we will, uh we will go from there. While I won't um talk about the decisions the state police makes about their presence uh on um Capitol grounds during those events, I will tell you that uh organization has taxed, has been taxed as well uh with uh probably uh up to a hundred troopers working in the Portland area, trying to do assist them. So I believe it's quite possible and probable that uh their ability to staff the event at the Capitol was certainly impacted to uh in one way or another. Uh but I will tell you, our uh discussions with the state police will continue and we will do what we can to keep people safe. Um we've, uh we certainly believe in uh peaceful protests and we'll do anything we can to make sure those occur. And uh where we do see violence, we will certainly step in to try and mitigate that.
Thank you, Chief. Any, any questions for the chief? Yes, Counselor Nordak?
There we go. Thank you, Chief. So I had heard, uh again, I mean, because we have uh reports coming from all kinds of angles, I heard that there were some individuals who were driving through our city streets with taped-over license plates. Do you know Salem Police received any of those reports? And if so, did Salem Police take action on any of those reports?
Uh I'm aware of those reports as well. And I'm uh the, I, I think the facts are pretty clear that there were people that had driven from Clackamas uh town center all the way down to Salem uh with their plates um obscured. Uh I do not, uh quite frankly, we were busy enough at the uh at the mall to deal with issues other than license plates. And I don't mean to minimize that, but uh that was not um what, what we were dealing with on that day. And uh I have not uh determined whether we've taken any action against any of the people with covered license plates.
Okay. I appreciate that. You know, Salem, we're in a unique position because as a capital city, we are a destination for protests, always have been, always will be. And to me, you know, I think a lot, the concerns that I keep hearing over and over again is that a lot of folks feel like there is selective enforcement of our laws. And so I, I wanted to share that with you because while I was not present there for the protest myself, those are the concerns that we're hearing. And I know it's so incredibly important for us to be transparent, which is why many of us counselors have asked for a full report, as I understand it. And I look forward to getting that. And I appreciate you being available for questions right now. Um and I would be very curious to hear what information you can share after you've spoken with the um, the Oregon State Police because, you know, uh people are exercising their right to protest. We want people to be able to do that safely. I, I, I think we all share that, that belief, that we want people to be able to peacefully exercise their rights. And that kind of violence down at the Capitol is, is really scary to folks. So thank you.
Yep. Okay. Thank you, Chief, very much.
Thank you.
Chief Niblock? So what are you?
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and counselors. Uh I'm gonna provide you with a brief uh update on uh the fire situation. Uh uh just some basic stats, and then we'll, we'll delve down a little deeper into what the city is providing, services the cities are, are providing uh to help with this uh signor, significantly historic event. Uh and that's probably an understatement when you say that. I mean, there is a lot of people who've really been displaced from their homes. There's people who have lost loved ones. Uh we're just beginning to, to discover the, the, the totality of the impact when you look at the destruction. Um and I heard seventy percent of the buildings are destroyed in most of the towns. And there are a few houses that are still standing, but they're here and there. And most of them are burnt to the ground. Uh so that's really impactful uh uh event uh in anybody's life. But the scale of this is just uh unfathomable for, for us. Um so basically, we have uh the Beechey Creek Fire and the Lion's Head Fire and the Riverside Fire that are all on the eastern uh area of Salem. And uh the good news for Salem is that the, the, the westerly progress of the fire has really died down quite a bit with the, the rays and humidity uh and the, the lack of the winds that were pushing it before, almost fifty five miles an hour the first night. Um we actually had uh two fire engines, two grass trucks and some command staff up there in Gates the very first evening, um before a state confrontation actually got put into place. Um they were desperate for resources, so we sent up what we could. And they, they did save some houses up there and got some people uh to the hospital that first night. And they ran the fire. Our crews ran the fire for the first about fourteen hours until state resources started to arrive. Uh Lion's Head Fire is a, a large fire as well. It's showing some more fire activity. It's further east, of course. It starts uh the, the eastern or the westernmost part of the fire starts at like, or Detroit Lake. Uh and then goes back up into the, the Indian Reservation. They're up into the forest. And uh so it's burning a little more actively to the north and the east, uh which is problematic. It's moving up the same way that the Riverside Fire is moving up towards, you know, Oregon City and Estacada and Malala and those areas. Um so they're, uh they're building lines around these fires, which means control lines. Um they're working very hard to get people back into Gates and Mill City, Detroit, all the areas, Idana, um so they can take a look at their properties. Of course, they have to make it safe before they do that. There's still a lot of trees that could fall at a, at a moment's notice. Um power lines down. Um it's just really a, wh- when people get in there, I think they're gonna be really shocked at the devastation that they see when they actually see it for themselves. And you can see pictures on the internet, but when you get there, uh you know, you smell the smoke, uh you see the fire, there's not much left. It's really, it's really impactful on folks. So our heart goes out to, to everybody that's, that's had a loss there. And uh we're trying to do everything we can to, to maintain uh the safety for folks. Um the city has provided, as I said, we were there the first night with the task force, and we have provided a, a second task force now. And they've been on the fire since the first day. Uh and they're assisting on the Beaver Creek Fire. And uh that's eighteen of our firefighters and two fire engines, two grass trucks, a water tender and a strike team leader. And I know the police department is assisting Marion County Sheriff's Office with uh patrols here in Salem that they would normally have. And I believe they're also assisting with patrols uh in, in the fire area as well. Um our PIO uh specialists in town, uh ten of our employees are assisting with the Joint Information Center uh with Marion County and uh making sure that we've really get the information out to the public. Uh that's very important. Um and I would echo everything, every, all the counselors said about social media and how dangerous a place it can really be for false information. And I would encourage everyone to go to the official source for their news. Uh the Marion County website, uh the City of Salem website. Um you know, if you want to know what the air quality is, go, you can go look at Air Quality Index on the web. Um but Facebook, sometimes in situations like this, isn't your best source of information because it's just, it's an unfettered uh uh resource and you just don't know who's putting it out there. So um it's, it's good to hear that, that people are starting to turn towards a reliable sources of information uh when they're getting that. Our PIO group has done a great job, um led by Deputy Chief Ben Moser and Courtney Knox-Bush is uh in there and a lot of other folks are, are really doing a great job. Um Greg Walsh, our emergency manager, has been on loan to Marion County. He's been a liaison for Marion County uh for, for the totality of this event and will remain that way. Um so we're really trying to work together with our partners. Um you know, this, fortunately, this fire didn't really burn into Salem, and we're glad that it didn't, but it's burning in our county. And so we want to help all those residents that are up there. Uh and uh, you know, we didn't send resources to California this year um because we were worried about uh, you know, having a fire here. And I'm glad we didn't uh because we were able to help out locally. And uh, you know, we typically don't send this many resources out of town, but uh we're still able to protect the community with the resources we have left. And uh so we felt it was important to, to jump on that opportunity and really maybe slow the spread of the fire and uh save what we could. Uh the other thing that I would tell you is that um the fire has not had an impact uh on our water quality or our water quantity. So we are not using a lot of water to fight this fire. Um and our quality of our water is still, it's still safe to drink. It has been since the inception. Um Garan Island was one of the key resources that we communicated with the incident management team when they first started taking over, the federal team. Is this a very important resource? It provides water for all the people in Salem and, and other communities. And we want to make sure that it's, it's protected. And uh so we've, we've got the fire watch around uh Stateon earlier in the fire. That's not an issue anymore. Uh but so we, we feel good that we were able to protect that very important resource. All of you mentioned air quality. It's pretty obvious we have bad air quality right now. And, you know, we encourage people to, to wear the particulate masks and we have been handing them out. City staff have been handing them out to our nonprofit partners. Any nonprofit partner who's asked for a mask, we have filled those orders 100%. We gave 200 to the mission the other day. We've given 1,200 to some other organizations and encourage them to reach out to the unsheltered individuals to make sure they have at least a mask to protect them, their respiratory during the next while while we have the, the air quality. We're hoping that later this week, the air quality will get better. But like predicting the weather, sometimes those predictions aren't, aren't always accurate. So we're hoping for some rain and a little bit of wind shift and hopefully you can see that air clear up a little bit. Somebody mentioned this is a long-term event. They're, they're right now calculating that this fire would be completely contained by October 31st. So that's a little ways off and there will still be hot spots. It'll smolder in the middle of the fire because these are thousand hour fuels that are burning in the forest. And they're trees, basically, so big logs that are going to burn for a long period of time. The other, the other partners we're working with is the fairgrounds. We have the Red Cross, of course, out there working with Marion County to help the shelter the evacuated fire victims and help them get some sense of normalcy back. You know, when you, when you see these folks get interviewed on the news, they look like they're adrift because they really are. They've lost everything and they, they don't know what to do next. So Red Cross can come along beside them, get them in a hotel room as a family unit because of COVID. Normally we'd have cots set up in a big Jackman Long building and they do have a few cots set up, but they're trying to shelter them in, in hotel units as a family group. Last thing I'll talk about is FEMA. You're probably aware the governor has requested emergency declaration to President Trump. And it, all indications are he's going to get that signed. And we've already seen some FEMA resources start to come into town. And that will be really focused on helping long-term for people, shelter for people. So they'll bring in the, the little houses like they do for hurricanes and provide shelter for these people long-term before they can get back in their homes or rebuild or go through the insurance process. So the, we're going to have, they, they arrived last night. We have three type one teams, which is the highest type team you can have in the federal response. There's only 16 of these in the whole United States. We have three of them in Oregon right now. Two of them are in Marion County. So highly skilled individuals, they come with about 100 people on each team to manage these incidents. We're, we're helping them however we can to make sure that they've got all the resources they need. And, you know, the, the federal, federal folks that do this all the time, you know, they'll bring in the helicopters and the, the 20-person hand crews and the hot shot crews. And they really know how to fight forest fires. That's what they do for a living all year. And so we're, we're fortunate to have those kind of resources here already on the ground and a few more arriving in the next few days. So I think we're well positioned to move forward. It's just going to take us some time to really get back a, a little bit of sense of normalcy. Get the smoke cleared out and start dealing with. We still have a lot of loss to, to recover yet and there's still going to be some bodies that are going to be found. You know, I think tonight on the news, they said there's been 10 in the state so far and there's still 20 some people missing. So they're still in the process. Use our teams are going out now and getting into the properties and making sure each property is clear. There's a lot of properties to go through, so it's going to take them a long time to do that. They've got search dogs, cadaver dogs and those kinds of things. So it's a long grueling process for that to be completed. And then eventually they'll get people back in and they can go look at their properties and to see what's, what's there. But it's going to take a little while to get to that. And all, with that, I'll just say that I'm, I'm proud to be a member of, of the Salem team. They really, with everything that's gone on this year with the COVID pandemic and all the things that have happened, we just seem to be able to do what we need to do and work together and work together with our partners to make, you know, make the community safe.
Thank you, Chief, very much. We're, we're extremely proud of all of our first responders. I know our firefighters, everyone who's been involved in this. We just can't thank you enough for the tremendous work you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Powers, anything else?
Nothing more, Mayor, thank you.
Just one more, just to have you underline what the chief said. Water supply is safe, the water is good to drink.
Yes and yes. And i- if you, if you'd like a quick update from Peter or Mark Bechtel and our plans for going forward, they're available. If, and, and Peter, why don't you give a quick, a quick update on our plans going forward for Garren Island and our drinking water?
Certainly, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Can't stress enough that the water is absolutely safe to drink. Remember that the ash and the smoke and stuff are on top. The water goes through the filters and then goes into pipes and never comes out until it hits your, your tap. So, so the water is being treated perfectly safe to drink. We did have people out on fire watch. We were very concerned early on that the fire was headed our way and we were very fortunate for us that the fire stopped at Maham and then headed north and didn't, didn't impact our operations at all. Into the future, the short term, we are going to be very, very concerned about turbidity in the source water, first and foremost, just given the amount of our, of our watershed that has burned. We're, we're going to expect a lot of ash, a lot of mud as the rain starts. So we will have to see how we can address that. We can, our, our filters don't handle turbidity very well. We have to settle all that out before it gets into the final polishing filter. So we'll be working on those solutions. There's also reports about what may or may not be happening with the, with the dams. They are operating, but if anything happens, then obviously that would cut our, our supply short. So we are in contact with a core of engineers to make sure that the dams are operating. Certainly there's enough flow in the river, so we haven't had any issues. As we head into future years, I can't tell you how happy I am that we're spending $50 million on that ozone plant. All that ash, we, it's, it's our theory that the, that the ash over time, the, the nitrogen in it, et cetera, is what feeds the, the algae, which then creates cyanotoxins. So, so we're really, the plant, the, the ozone plant does not address turbidity, but it will address the toxins. So we're delighted that, you know, we're going to, we're going to be in good shape there as we head into the future. There was some concern about fire retardant being deployed. If that gets into the water, you know, we're working with OHA to see what concern that may or may not have. There's a lot of experience in California about that. So we're, we're in close contact with the Oregon Health Authority about those issues and how may, how they may impact us. So, so there's a number of issues that, that we're addressing and just planning into the future for. But, but today and into the, and into the foreseeable future, we got water and it's perfectly safe to drink. So appreciate the attention.
Very good. Well, we'll look forward to future reports from you, Mr. Fernandez, as this develops. Knowing as the weather changes, the, the status of that water supply changes. So we'll, we'll look forward to hearing from you regularly.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else? Okay, very good. We'll move along then. With your permission, I've got a couple of proclamations. I'd like to just enter one into the record. It's the September 11th Remembrance Day Proclamation. I issued it on September 8th. It will become part of our permanent record unless someone wants me to read it out. The second is Constitution Day. I'm going to do, it's coming up, so I'll, I'll, obviously September 11th is past. Constitution Day, whereas the Constitution of the United States embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas we celebrate the 233rd anniversary of the signing of the United States Constitution on September 14th, 2020. And whereas we recognize the 64th Anniversary of Constitution Week is issued by President Dwight D. Eisenhower on August 19, 1955 and signed into public law in 915 on August 2nd, 1956. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document, patriotic celebrations commemorating the occasion. And whereas the city of Salem, Chomekada Chapter of Daughters of the American Revolution officially acknowledges this historical occasion as it has been an official chapter since November 15th, 1915. And whereas recognizing the chapter's continued promotion of historic preservation, education and patriotism, now therefore I Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the city of Salem, do hereby proclaim September 17th to 23rd, 2020 as Constitution Week and encourage the community to reaffirm the ideals of the Constitution by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to all of us through this enduring document dated this 14th day of September, 2020. All right. Do you have any presentations, Mr. Manager? I don't have any written down. We'll go to public comment then.
No presentations.
Okay, sir, thank you. First up is Mark Wig on 3.2A.
Okay, thank you. I'm Mark Wig. I live at 1950 Saginaw Street South. Mayor Bennett, I ask you and Steve Powers and Peter Fernandez to resign because of your criminally negligent policies and actions that may have led to the rape and murder of both dozen or more women in Wallace Marine Park. When you forced the homeless to leave downtown, you told them that they could camp at Wallace Marine Park and Cascade Gateway Park. You were aware that the homeless downtown included violent felons and psychotic men. You concentrated these people in the two parks. In addition to the men that you sent to Wallace, you sent women and girls. You told them that the only place for them to camp was in these parks. So you took rabbits and tossed them in a cage with wolves. Is there anyone unable to predict the outcome of that? Imagine a young woman that is evicted from her apartment for its fleeing domestic violence. She grabs a few things that are precious to her, sleeping bag, a tent and a few clothes. She goes to Wallace Marine Park because that is where you told her to camp. She gets there and sets up her tent that night or maybe the night. She wakes when a man cuts open her tent and sits on her while she is in her sleeping bag. She can't move her arms or legs. She is helpless. Think of the terror and hopelessness she feels as clothes are stuffed in her mouth to stop her thrive for health. A few minutes later, she is dead. The murderer drags into the river his ass in her sleeping bag, tosses a few rocks in the bag and ties it up. Dragging the bags and needy water, the murderer lets it sink and drift down. I have seen the torn tents and the precious effects that inexplicably are left behind. The sleeping bags and girls are gone. We may never know their names. Their things will be washed away with the next high water or piled with other trash that is occasionally picked up. You didn't have to be so cruel, but it was so much easier than doing the right thing. I hope tonight, when you, before you're falling asleep, that you will imagine the terror and pain you caused and are causing. I hope you feel shame, enough shame to resign so more competent and compassionate leaders can take your role. And just a couple of words on fire. I have a very good fire story. Wonder which chocolate chip cookies saved West Salem from a conflagration? When I heard that there is fire weather and fire winds coming, I went down to Wallace Marine Park with a bag of cookies that my roommate made. When I, I had seen that so many of the fires at Wallace Marine Park are on top of the ground. They're not protected. They were within feet, just a few feet of dry brush. So I took my cookies and I went down there and the first thing I saw on the path going north from the Ball Diamonds was a 14-inch diameter, four-foot-long log sitting on top of the ground within a few feet of dry brush. It was smoldering in several places. When those dry winds hit a log like that, they burst into flames, throw sparks and start fires. I found the person that was in charge of that log. And I told him I have chocolate chip cookies. And I told him that a fire storm was coming and they needed to put out that log. They promised they would and I gave him the cookies. And so that's a good fire story because there wasn't.
Thank you. Questions? Hey, Steve Anderson, 3.3D.
May I take this moment to interject that there's a three-minute limit to public comment, lady?
Well, cut them off at three minutes then.
Yes, sir.
I can't tell. You're going to have to either interrupt or, or just turn them off, one or the other, but I'm not timing them. Somebody else is.
Can we share screen?
Steve can do it. Steve, three minutes.
All right, can we share screen real fast?
Yes, go ahead, please.
All, all right. I, I've got it up. I don't know if I'm showing or not.
Not, not just yet. You're able to hit the green share screen button on your, on the interface, on Zoom interface, and then select the PDF file that you'd like to share.
I'll just share the screen. It's share screen. Okay. All right, well, if it's there, it's not, it's in your packet. Right, so, so, real quick, Mayor, I just, and city council, I'm here, Steve Anderson, West Salem Neighborhood Land Use Chair. And just one, first, we want to thank Clint Dameron for his good and hard work moving forward the purchase of Right Away on Marine Drive. And, and thank him for his efforts and see that that's a good thing. The West Salem Neighborhood Association's Executive Committee and whole group voted to affirm the decision of council to purchase Marine Drive from Cameo, Fifth and Cameo North to River Bend. And we've been asked to, I've been asked to ask city council to encourage whoever's in the decision-making process to continue to pick up those four properties that have not been reached and looked at and move that along. It's about 650 feet of right-of-way, but the top screen that I show you in your packet shows the old alignment and where Fifth Street comes in and, and meets Marine Drive. And that red thing there, you can see, yeah, you can see it now. That has been a subject of some dispute and often questions have been asked to city leadership. They say they're working from Fifth Avenue North, which is the case. But we, this, as the right-of-way is, is shown in, in the picture below between point A and point B, which is the council-approved decision back in June of 2019. That's four properties, about 650 feet of right-of-way. And we would like to see that whoever's up, up the food chain and making that decision to, to step on that. And probably will have to have this discussion further at another council meeting. The issue here is that the old alignment, if you go to page two, I talked with Counselor Lewis and probably let him speak to it generally, but he expressed a concern that the old alignment that goes east over by the park there to the right, which is in red, would be preserved and I shared with him. And there is a way with this alignment from A to B in the yellow there can be straightened within the rules and not affect, there's a 200-foot limit ability there. It cannot affect the, the transportation system plan and would cause a change to that. So in the future, if we wish to go in that alignment east nor, and around the park, it's still there. So basically, thank you, Mr. Dameron, for your hard work. And we would like to have a further discussion with council to clarify that motion that we go from point A to point B, as was in the motion, and get that moving forward to connect West Salem. It, we believe in the connectivity. It's important to the community. It's been part of our goals for several years. And we thank Public Works for the hard work they're doing. And so we will come back probably next meeting. Hopefully it can be on the agenda to have that conversation, but that's kind of the long and the short of it. Thank you for the hard work.
Yes, Counselor Anderson.
And thank you, Steve, and your group in West Salem for your hard work. You know, you specifically were speaking on 3.3D, which is something that I pulled from the consent agenda. And I, I'm hoping the staff can just acknowledge that that purchase is way north of the issue on Cameo Drive and Fifth and everything else. So we're not moving forward. So we're not moving forward on anything that is gonna affect what is happening down further south, but we are trying to complete the last remaining segments of the right away before we get to this final segment. So thanks again, Steve, for holding our feet to the fire on this.
Well, good, and I think there's, there's room for understanding, I think there's room for compromise, but basically tonight, Mayor and Counselor Clint and his group is doing good work and we really appreciate what he's doing in the community, so thank you.
Hey, John Shepherd, seven point two A.
Yes, sir. Well, I, I'm John Shepherd, I live in Ward Four, Salem, Oregon. I submitted three documents as testimony on the subject before you. The information is my observations. Document one, Stormwater Battle Creek Basin. It identifies the active participation I have had on the subject with Salem Stormwater Committee. A decision during two thousand and eighteen at a committee meeting was made to be less than transparent regarding use of stormwater inundation models developed in Salem. Fear among the members exposing the data would have a negative effect on property values and increase flood insurance premiums. Now, a public nonprofit called First Street Foundation has published this information regarding Salem properties at extreme flood risk. Reelers dot com is providing this information from the First Street Foundation with two home buyers on their internet site. The cat is out of the bag on that subject. The second document is dealing with the public hearing, two thousand and twenty B.C. code changes. It, it addresses two integrated elements of the code which work in opposition to the staff's finding that the code amendment is in the best interest of public hearing, of public health. Oregon does not experience a twenty-four hour design storm, then magically resets to zero the start for the next day. Two elements are ignored by the use of a design storm of twenty-four hours. One are clay soils, they absorb water like a sponge. Second, the nature of our winter storms. Oregon has multi-day storms with repeating levels of intensity. We need a metric in this area that recognizes the rainfall conditions in Salem, not Arizona. The last document I submitted is regarding the Salem Code, Chapter Seven, Section seven one, zero nine zero, Paragraph B, which is being deleted. The language of Paragraph B was developed over two separate storm committee meetings. It attempts to address the lack of knowledge regarding storm stream capacities and permit the director to make rational decisions regarding development and stormwater management on new large proper projects. The proposed changes guts this issue and opens the door for increased storm volumes in the streams. The streams already are beyond capacity as evidenced by the storms of ninety-six and twenty-twelve. This leads to damaging property of downstream residents. As stated, I believe this is bad policy. I encourage the City Council to take a serious look at this issue, and it will come up again in the Stormwater Master Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any, any questions on this? I'm sure there are, I, it's just part of it is this is a complicated issue, so.
Totally understand, Mayor.
Yeah, this is one we had a public hearing on, did you testify, John, at the public hearing?
I was not aware that you had a public hearing on the twenty-eighth, twenty-fourth of August, in fact, I wasn't even in town at the time. I would have if I had, because I've been involved in since twenty-seven, two thousand and seven.
Right, right, okay. Well, thank you very much, are you, are you saying then that you see this as a thing we will be addressing again? I mean, this is an ongoing discussion that we need to continue to have?
Certainly, the, the sections of the first page, but my concerns are that you right now are looking at approving the code, the removal of the Paragraph B in your code. And that, and that is an issue, I think, that we made a lot of time in the, in the Stormwater Committee meetings to get the language so that it was evident we have a problem, one, capacities and streams, and two, to enable the director to get that information on a project so he can take the, he can, he can assess the problem, the risk, to Salem, and then allow the developer to go forward based upon conditions that are relevant. If you take that information out of, out of the code, you now create a situation where the metric will fail us downstream. And this issue with the First Street people, there, there are statements about how many houses in Salem are really at extreme risk will just get, you know, get greater, it will grow.
All right. Okay. Yes, Counselor Leon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure this would be a question to ask later. I recognize that especially for the Stormwater Management Plan that is, we're in the second reading for it, and I do want to echo Mr. Shepherd's concerns about that, the removal of that particular part of the code. Is there a way where we can have a discussion about it, or either now or when we get to that particular part of the agenda?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Atkinson?
I can address Counselor Leon's.
Yeah, would you, thank you.
Given, given that we did have a public hearing on this, while the testimony is, is technically permitted to be allowed now at second reading, we obviously don't have relevant staff here to answer questions and respond to the testimony. So if there's a concern about proceeding with second reading at this time, I would ask that the Council President make a substitute motion to delay second reading until we've had a chance to address any questions.
Yeah, I, I think with that, Counselor Leon, that may be the direction we'll need to, we'll decide that when we vote on this, but I, I know that Counselor Hoy is listening carefully or whomever to take, to make that motion, to see where we're headed with this thing. I think we need to make sure we understand what we're doing, and we may need to hold off on this just to, I think really to understand Mr. Shepherd's really pretty. It's somewhat detailed discussion that, that unfortunately was not brought to us in the public hearing, and should have been.
Thank you, I, I agree.
John, don't leave town, stay in town. Okay. Thank you, John. Did I miss anybody? Am I watching, I'm watching, okay. Glenn Bailey? There he is. Go ahead, Glenn.
Sorry, sorry, I just, since John has already spoken, I just want to echo a lot of what he said, I, I'm just introducing myself, first of all, Glenn Bailey, I reside in Ward Four, I'm the Chair of the South Gateway Neighborhood Association. We just echo, first of all, in regards to your removal of the code portion that would require large developers to put in storm facilities that needed for, to prevent downstream capacity, we feel that, no, that should be retained, it actually should be strengthened, that, you know, as a neighborhood association, flooding has always been a concern to us because of the impact on our area, especially around Battle Creek. And we would, based on your discussion, I would say that you should delay the second reading until these questions have been addressed. So since John has already spoken, that really is one of our, our main, the main topic we wanted to speak on tonight.
Okay, I, I think, and this issue did come up during the public hearing. Unfortunately, there weren't a lot of people here to testify at the public hearing who are apparently concerned with this, so I think it, it wasn't fully vetted, we need to vet it further, and we will. So we'll see, we'll see where we can go from here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, that's that one. Now, should we go to the, just, just one second, let me just open this up, the consent calendar. Counselor Hoy?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, technical difficulties momentarily. I have approval of the consent calendar.
Okay.
Do you have a second?
Second, second.
Okay, who's seconding this? Nanki, okay.
And, and I'm sorry, but.
One call, right?
Yes, that's what I, neglected to mention that in my, in my motion.
Okay, three point three D called by Anderson, right?
Correct.
Okay. So everything but three point three D is on the table, okay?
Correct.
Okay.
So that leaves item three point one A, the August twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty draft City Council minutes, item three point two A, authorizing a transfer of appropriation authority in the general fund. Item three point three A, petition initiated vacation of an alley near the intersection of Pine Street and Front Street Northeast. Three point three C, intergovernmental agreement with the Ben Police Department for an audit of Ben's Evidence Processes and Evidence Room. I'm sorry, I skipped over three point three B, an agreement between the City of Salem and Ride Salem to operate bike sharing stations on city property. Item three point three E, an amendment to lease with Rudy's Steakhouse LLC. Item three point three F, grant to Main Street Association for Holiday Promotion and Events. Item three point three G, general fund grant to Midland Valley Community Action Agency for volunteer recruitment, and that concludes the consent calendar.
Very good, any discussion? Recorder would please call the roll.
Counselor Osik is absent, Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis is absent, Counselor Kazer?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor Leon?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Have any public hearings, so we'll go to the Special Orders of Business. We have a strategic plan update.
Yeah, thank you, Courtney Knox-Bush and Colleen Rosellis from our consultant Moss Adams will, will.
Oh, great.
Brief update for, for council this evening. Or Colleen will.
Colleen will, excellent, Colleen, if you'll just.
Colleen, please.
And yourself and have at us.
Thanks, everyone, good evening, I'm Colleen Rosellis, I'm a Director with Moss Adams in our consulting division, and we're working with the city to update the strategic plan. I think some of you went through the strategic plan process in two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and seventeen, so if you can believe it, it's already time for an update, and so I'm gonna share some slides with you tonight, and feel free to jump in if you've got questions. Just give me a minute to. All right, there we go. So I guess I already introduced myself, here we are. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about just how we're gonna go about the strategic plan, what we mean when we talk about our strategic plan, and how we're gonna go about the next steps here, which we will be engaging with you all quite a bit over this process. So first things first, strategic plan is really about, we're updating this plan, right? So you started with a plan, it's quite robust, but we do want to update it, a lot has changed in the last few years, both in terms of kind of city operations and also the environment in which the city operates. So we're gonna build on the foundation of that plan, we're gonna use a pretty lean process, and we're gonna be very flexible throughout the process, understanding everything two thousand and twenty has thrown at us, we're gonna continue to try to roll with those punches as they come. Our goal is to have a new plan updated and adopted kind of late January, early February. So over the next few months, we'll be engaging with staff, with citizens, and the business community and other members of the community, as well as with you all to shape the strategic plan. We are using a lot of outreach that has already been done, the city's really good at public outreach, and we work with hundreds of cities, and, and Salem's right at the top in terms of community engagement and really trying to get a pulse on the community. And then we're also gonna be doing some additional community outreach, once we've got work that the community can react to. So here's our planning framework, right at the top, we've got mission, vision, and values, that's the core of the strategic plan, and that's really the core area that we want to engage you as the council members in. Who are we as a government? Where are we going? What are our values as an organization? Our first work session, when we come back to you next month, will really be focused around that. And then we'll be working on developing some strategic goals, we'll probably have somewhere between four and seven goals for the city for the next three to five years. Those goals may be similar, they may change from the goals that are currently in the plan. Underneath that, then, we're thinking about the council policy agenda, we want the strategic plan to drive the council's annual policy agenda, and we align the timing of this project so that when we're adopting the plan, we'll also be adopting that first year policy agenda. And then we'll be working with departments to develop implementation plans for the first year so that they can really focus on the strategic initiatives and move the needle on what we want to achieve as a city. So our process will be input from the community, input from staff, input from council. Our goal is for the plan to be practical and actionable, the last thing that we want is for the plan to sit on a shelf, and so we really want to make sure that this is achievable within the current funding environment, within the current policy environment. And then our goal is to really balance the needs of the community, we want to think about what the community needs now, and we want to think about what is our vision for the future of Salem, and match that up and try to get us to move toward the future. So right now, here I am kicking off the project with you, it's September, we'll be doing interviews with all of you over the next month, you should be receiving invitations for those later this week. We're also doing focus groups with the management teams of each department, we start those on Wednesday, and then we'll be working on mission, vision, and values with you and the management team. Next month, we'll be working on goal areas and we'll be using some prioritization tools, doing lots of virtual community engagement, and doing a work session with you all to work on prioritization of those goal areas as well. And then as we go further into the process, we'll be working on developing those specific objectives and strategies. We'll come back to you in January with a full draft strategic plan, we'll get input from the community on that full plan with a goal of adopting in February. Community input really, really important to us through this process, it's very important to make sure that the community is heard, your last strategic plan had really tremendous community engagement, like I said earlier, you all already do quite a bit of community engagement, so we're gonna use data that already exists, and then we're gonna go to the survey and really use our surveys to talk about how will we prioritize? If we only have limited resources because we are a public entity, where are we gonna focus those over the next three to five years? What's really important to the community? And that's where we're really gonna dig in and get that public input, and we'll also ask you as council members to do that, and also help us to reach the community as well. We particularly want to make sure that we're reaching those members of the community who might not always show up at meetings, might not have the bandwidth or the access, and make sure that we can be as inclusive as possible and we're receiving that feedback. And then finally, when we have a full strategic plan draft, we're gonna want to release it to the community and have everyone the ability to provide public comment on the full plan. So with that, very quick presentation, I'd love to open it up for questions if you have some.
Anyone have any questions then?
I have a question.
Yes, Counselor Leon?
Thank you, so, so my question has to do with the, the final, the, I guess, diversion that will be sent out to the public before it comes to the City Council. If, if, let's say somebody in the community or community organization wanted to take a look at the reports, will they actually have access to a printed copy, or would the printed copy only be available at the city, City Hall, for example, or online?
That's a good question, so we usually do online surveys and then kind of pre-COVID, when we did community engagement, often we, we'd have printed copies, say, at libraries, at Center Fifty Plus, at City Hall, kind of other places where folks could access it. So I think we're gonna have to keep that in mind while also balancing, we could still be in a position where those facilities may not be open.
Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just have a couple of quick questions, one is, or maybe question and comment, one is, I hope that we are really just taking this opportunity to build off of the work we've already done, because we're, we're not done with that plan, and we did a lot of really good work, I hope that we don't.
I hope that we don't start over on the mission, vision, and values. I feel like we have a really strong base there and that we don't need to spend a ton of time on that stuff again. We really just need to focus on the meat of the of the matter. The other question I had is, what's the plan to engage with current counselors as well as counselors-elect for input before they take office?
We do have a plan for that, and Steve, feel free to jump in. So I think that our hope is that we can actually have a work session where we're able to invite both the management team as well as you all and the counselors-elect all together. Our goal is to do that in kind of November, December, when we're able to have almost a full plan, so that way we can all really dig into the work together.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, just to interrupt. This is Courtney, and I just want to add in that we have already alerted all of the counselors-elect as part of our new counselor orientation to the existing strategic plan and the upcoming strategic plan update. And so they are aware of the upcoming conversations that we hope to include them in. Thank you.
Great. Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was gonna comment on the same thing, and I'm more than happy to have. And technically, right now, it's counselor nominee. There will be counselor-elect after the November election to include a future Counselor Phillips in any conversations we have on that because it's it's going to be, you know, him that's sitting there come the turn of the year.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's a really, it's a point well taken. It sounds like the staff has this under and the consultant have this one under control. And if you have any questions, I really, if you're concerned, have any detailed concerns, I'd suggest you contact Courtney and let her know if you think there might be, if you hear from a counselor nominee or elect, whatever their status is at that point, and you feel like, they feel like they need more information. I think letting Courtney know that would be real helpful for her. So, okay? Good. Thank you very much, Colleen. Really appreciate it. Look forward to working with you.
Thanks, everyone. Talk to you soon.
Okay, our next one is Counselor Anderson. What's your call for us, Tom?
I move the staff recommendation on agenda item 3.3D.
Second.
Second by Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've already discussed this tangentially today when Steve Anderson testified about it. The last bond measure has, right now, allocated about $3.6 million for purchase of right-of-way. The real issue here has been where we're going to purchase the right-of-way, and I think it's been pretty clear from council directions that we want to purchase right-of-way north of where Fifth Avenue and Cameo come in, and that's what we've been doing. And that's what the item we're looking at now, purchasing now. I had a few questions regarding the price and what we're getting for that price, and why is the price so high, seems so high? And for what we are getting, and staff did a good presentation in executive session, and I'm wondering if they could do a brief presentation here about what we are getting and how that fits into the plan. And are we going to have enough money left over to purchase the other parts of the right-of-way, at least the parts north of the area that we'll be looking at later?
If I may, Mayor, Steve Powers. We'll attempt to do a presentation. I know Clint Dameron, our real estate manager, will be able to answer questions, and he may be able to call up the visual for that area. And then I'd like Peter Fernandez to respond to the second question regarding available funding.
Okay. So Clint, what are we getting for all this money?
So historically, again, Clint Dameron, Real Property Services Manager, the first rendition of this agreement involved acquisition of a larger piece of property involving all the property within growth boundary. The seller's desire has changed due to some challenges with relocating their house, and they now desire to keep the bulk of the remainder property. So we are now only buying the Marine Drive right-of-way proper via a roadway easement, which will be converted to right-of-way at the proper time. The, within that Marine Drive right-of-way easement lies the owner's single-family home and a large portion of their barn. So if you look at the math, you say we used to be getting, you know, three and a half acres for 1.35 million. Now we're only getting about two-thirds of an acre for a million dollars. But the bulk of that value does lie within the structures themselves, the single-family home and the barn. There's an take on, you know, the remaining land value of the multifamily land that they are now keeping. But this was the price that we were able to negotiate with the owner while still getting the right-of-way we need to preserve that for future Marine Drive Northwest right-of-way. And if I'll move on and tee up Peter to the funding question. To reiterate, we had $3.6 million to start with staff costs, survey costs, and dedicated funds to date through other PSAs, including this one. If this goes through, we will still have about $1.3 million left to buy right-of-way. And that also includes previously backing out future staff costs and a bunch of survey work that has been done during this phase that will benefit later phases, should those sales come to fruition.
Clint, one question before we move on to Peter on what's available for other properties. What was the kind of process that allowed us to reach the million-dollar value for a barn house and this two-thirds of an acre? What, do you use some sort of appraisal process, or how do you get there? Because I can't believe it's, it isn't just where they've got you over a barrel and it's a million bucks. There must be some sort of appraisal that went on.
That's correct. So with the Marine Drive, we knew this particular property had the biggest impact, so we did an appraisal just for this piece of property. You know, determined highest and best use was as multifamily redevelopment land. So it assigned a value to the house, but mainly the assumption was it came out with most of the values in the land. And that came with a figure of, you know, over a million dollars, 1.2 million or so. And then we did some back and forth with, you know, what does the owner want to keep? What do they not want to keep? What's the best, you know, for them? So, but the bulk of the value did reside in the structure and the land that the Marine Drive right-of-way goes through.
But if someone were to go looking at this, were to look closely at this deal that you all have come up with and have presented to us, would they be able to determine this looked like we got a million dollars' worth of easement out of this or needed property out of this just in that easement and the house and land, or the house and barn, or whatever it is that went with it?
Right. I'd say we paid up a little bit. You know, but if it was just raw land, definitely it's not worth a million dollars.
Right.
You know, they have vested improvements on the site that we need to compensate them for.
So a little bit is better than a lot, is kind of what you're saying. Okay, Counselor Anderson?
Yeah, thank you. One of the other things we discussed, and maybe Clint, you want to refer, defer to Director Fernandez. But this is one segment of the property of the whole Marine Drive, and I sure looked, when you're looking at the maps, if you just move that segment over to the west, you'd avoid the house and the barn, which is where the value is. But at least my understanding, and you or Peter can confirm this, is the the whole Marine Drive has already been plotted out all the way from the top down to the bottom. And the vast majority of the right-of-way has already been purchased. So it wouldn't really be feasible to angle something and put it, you know, put it all the way to the to the west and then come back, back east from a traffic construction, road construction, any sort of thing you look at it. Is that a correct understanding?
Well, I wouldn't say a vast majority has already been acquired, but there are segments from north to south intermittently. And I'll let Peter speak to how and what we can change. And yes, there are connecting points that are already in place that you'd have to stay within.
The reason I assumed that the vast majority is because we only have 1.3 million left, and you say that's going to be enough to purchase the right-of-way. And then again, I think I'm doing now what in law we call a leading question. I think that the reason these, we can purchase what is left is because the land is worthless because it's basically undeveloped land that does not end up with the best and highest use of multifamily dwellings. Is that a true understanding of what's going on?
It's a summary. That's correct. So of some of the property that is left, a lot of it is outside the UGB and also in a flood, which makes it much less valuable.
Okay.
There is no other major improvements within the property we still need to get. I will caveat that, you know, looking at our appraised values, we should have sufficient funds to purchase what's left.
Okay.
Having said that.
Yeah.
You know, rarely do you get it for your first appraised value offer.
Sure.
Also, on a lot of these, you know, people have said, well, you can, I'll sell you my right-of-way, but you know, for instance, I don't want any of that land to the east. It's worthless to me now with that road there. So you also have to buy that if you want this.
And of course, you will resist that with vigor. Now, the other thing too is just so we understand, right now, you're purchasing an easement, but when it, that when it comes time to turn the easement into a road that we can use without any strictures that are there with an easement, it's not going to cost us any more money.
That's correct. It's built into the easement document.
Okay.
It's right-of-way for $1.
It's an easement now, but it will be fee simple owned land for a roadway later.
It'll be right-of-way, correct.
Okay, right-of-way. Okay. Then the final question I have is, there's like a panhandle going over, going west to Wallace Drive. That is just for an easement for us to get in and out. It's not going to be a street that will go over to Wallace Drive.
Correct. That is their current driveway. The city does have a current easement over that property to access a sewer line.
Okay.
On the Clark property.
So you also use that easement to.
That is not planned to be part of Marine Drive.
Okay, okay.
Connector to Wallace.
Hey.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Fernandez, will we have any money left when you get done with this?
Well, so Mayor, the only thing I would add is using Mr. Dameron's assessment that we might have enough money for the rest of the right-of-way. You know, we run a little short, and I won't, I won't define what little is. A new facility like this, a collector's street as it is designated, I think portions, some portions are designated as a minor arterial would be TSTC eligible. So if we need to make up a little bit of ground when we get to the end, we can bring some TSTC funds to bear. And as we have discussed with the council in the past, if development precedes some of the right-of-way acquisition, then we can always exact the right-of-way as we have done in some segments of Marine Drive. So we have those two tools. Depending on how long this goes, there may be a future bond issue where we can put more money in. But I think we'll, you know, we'll be able to complete with Clint's optimism, we'll be able to complete the acquisitions that the council has directed us to do.
So you have very high confidence someday, I mean, within a reasonable time span. I don't mean that looking out forever, but we will see a Marine Drive, and there is a funding route that we can see through that for doing right-of-way, then doing construction and getting this on the, on the ground.
Yeah, the long-term, the long-term solution is to put it in a bond issue, in a future bond issue. Having the right-of-way in place is, you know, recall that what was in the, in the November 2008 bond issue was money for some right-of-way acquisition. You know, so it was this amorphous third bridge or right-of-way acquisition. We finally came to, council finally came to a decision to just do right-of-way acquisition. Having those pieces in place will make construction of the road much more feasible. There's always ODOT monies. There's always other grants. I mean, or we just start allocating TSTC in the future to build pieces of it. So we're absolutely on our way.
And this stays high on our list of very important projects.
It has been, it's always been high on our list, yes.
I want, Counselor Lewis isn't here, so I'll channel him for a second.
He called me from San Diego today, so I know it's high on his list.
Go ahead. Counselor Anderson?
Yeah, thank you. That's a good explanation, and I think it's worthwhile to point out, all this money is doing is buying right-of-way. It's, we're going to have to have, when you say a bond issue, it's going, we're going to have more money to construct. And the original bond issue that was passed in 2007 or 2008 for this only said, we're buying right-of-way, not we are constructing a road.
Correct, correct.
And Peter, you used an acronym that I am very familiar with, TSTC, and that, I believe that is Transportation System Development Charges. And rather than ask you a leading question, Peter, I'll just say in, you know, 50 words or less, could you explain how the Transportation System Development Charges could be used to help pay for the road?
Certainly, and my apologies to council and the public. I try to keep away from acronyms, so that one got away from me. So Transportation Systems Development Charges, system development charges in general are fees assessed to new development to pay for the costs of new, of construction of new infrastructure that supports it. A new street like Marine Drive is precisely eligible for the use of these kinds of funds. Marine Drive was planned in the late 90s to support, we foresaw, the Community Development Department, Public Works Department foresaw all of those apartments going in on the east side of Wallace Road, and we laid out that street in the transportation plan and then surveyed it back in the late 90s, early 2000s. So it's absolutely there to support growth, and Transportation System Development Charges are assessed to pay for these kinds of facilities, so.
In other words, the developers aren't getting a free road to their place. They're going to, they're going to be paying for proportionally for the part of the road that services their property.
That is correct, and some of them, depending on their timing, either have or will dedicate some right-of-way or in some cases actually build portions of the road as we've seen out there before.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Nanki?
I mute myself here. You know, Norma, I just looked at the staff report and it was fine, and then Counselor Anderson brought up a couple of points. So just wanted to clarify a couple of things. We are moving right-of-way through a couple of structures, which increases our price. Council has previously adopted the boundaries of Marine Drive. And because of the shifts that the property owner has made to want to keep multifamily, which is, you know, a good return on investment for both the east and west side of that, can we actually shift road alignment to the west, which would increase the amount of space to the east? Because it's kind of narrow where we're looking at taking those structures that would both benefit the city from a cost perspective and benefit the property owner because they have more land to the east side of the new Marine Drive to actually put multifamily in.
So Counselor, we have, we have an adopted alignment, so Mr. Dameron actually works off of that adopted alignment to acquire right-of-way. It's not to say that in an area, especially to the north, where we're kind of coming down onto the floodplain, we'd have more flexibility. That piece that we're buying is the tightest spot because there's already rights, already pieces of Marine Drive built and others acquired. So while we might be able to do it in other locations, this is a location where we have to thread that needle.
Okay, because it looked like the property to the south wasn't dedicated already to where we can even still within the property maneuver more straight south and then have a slight shift to the east at the bottom of that property and bypass the intersection with those dwellings and accessory structures. But it's a cost benefit again. How much does it take to us to realign? and move that through council versus, you know, maximize benefit to both us and and the property owner if if we were to look at pursuing that?
Yeah, I I think in this case, we've done the best that we can given the given the constraints. I I appreciate the thoughts and in other locations, we might have been able to do that. I think here we're we're kind of in a, we're kind of in a squeeze.
Thanks.
Okay, anyone else? Let's go ahead then and have the recorder. Oh, do you all know Tom has moved the staff recommendation?
Okay, Counselor Hoy. I think you're muted, Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis is absent. Counselor Kizer?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Osik is absent. Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Good. We'll move on then to information reports. Anything? Mr. Powers, was there anything you wanted to go over in those information reports?
I I believe Counselor Anderson had one that he wanted.
He has, he has one. Do you have any?
I do not, no.
Okay, Tom, it's yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a quick comment on the first one about the, or second one about language access to council agendas and meeting. I think that's a terrific thing. And I would ask, kind of like I did on the fire updates, if that could really be published in city publications so people could be aware of it. Just telling us in an agenda isn't enough. I think we ought to send out some press releases or publicize that. The second thing is I would like to call up Agenda Item 6C, which is a planning commission decision on a minor comprehensive plan map amendment on some property that O dot owns in in near North Salem.
Okay, well.
Are we supposed to second it?
Well, if you wanted to move forward. Tom is waiting to see what you want.
I'll second.
Okay. Counsel, Counsel Leung has seconded that one. Hey, Tom, you want to talk about your motion?
Well, I I see that Planning Commission, the 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 Planning Department, the Community Development Department had some concerns about this and actually recommended that the the change not not be made. It's moving from a multifamily, higher density residential to I don't exactly know what it is, but it's public use or.
A storage facility, yes.
Storage facility, yeah. So I just think staff recommendation, Planning Commission, they're at odds. It seems to me that it's something we ought to be discussed in front of the council as a whole.
Okay. Yes, Counselor Kizer?
Thank you. When I saw this at first, I thought, okay. But as I dug into it more, I think it, I do think it's interesting and I think it might be worth just hearing from staff. And I don't mind if we call it up to hear from staff, but we're removing multifamily housing zoning, which is decreasing our multifamily housing zoning of which we already have a deficit. And that's curious to me, especially as there are other parts of the city where we're trying to increase it. So it doesn't make sense. I would like to hear staff's reasoning. And they did recommend denial, so they're recommending to not remove multifamily housing designation, but the planning commission didn't agree. So I, so even though from a from a glance, I was kind of ambivalent now, I'm like, no, I do want to kind of dig into that a bit.
Is this in your ward or Osik's?
Not, it's Ward 5.
Norman, I see your light on here.
Yeah, yes, sir, Mayor Norman Wright, Community Development Director. I I I'm hesitant to call it Lisa to talk a little bit about our recommendation because all of the rationale behind it is in the staff report itself. And so if if there's something missing that that is that's not in the staff report, then maybe Lisa can shed light on it, but it it's all there. So Lisa, is there anything in addition that you that you want to offer?
Hi there. No, it's mainly what Counselor Kizer said, multifamily land, we have a deficit, so we looked at it long and hard and we really don't think it's appropriate to change it to a different use. There's a lot of mitigating circumstances that the planning commission took into account and came to a different decision. So if the council wants to review that, I think we can bring all that information forward in a public hearing.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? Let's go ahead and have the recorder call.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis is absent. Counselor Kizer?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Osik is absent. Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Motion passes. A public hearing on it. Any, was there anything else anyone wanted to bring up on the information reports? Okay, we're to, we have no first readings. We have this second reading.
I got it.
Got it? Okay. Why don't you go ahead, Counselor Hoy?
I move to postpone second reading of Agenda Item 7.2A to the September 28th council meeting. Okay.
Second by Nanki.
Thank you. After consultation with the city attorney, we see that this is the best thing to do tonight for this the second reading. So that's what my motion is.
Thank you. The only question I'd have is we had some specific concerns raised that weren't raised at the public hearing. How do we get to those concerns or get answers on those? Will those be in some sort of staff report or how will you, how will we get to Mr. Shepherd's concerns? Second paragraph, it's that second paragraph being deleted.
Well, we we have Mr. Shepherd's comments and we can provide a staff report to go along with the second reading staff report that.
I think it would help to understand, number one, what's he talking about? What's, what what is this? I I recall Glenn talking about this. But also, does it do what suggested that it does? I mean, we need to kind of understand how this fits together in the changes you're proposing in this this really pretty important ordinance. The other thing he mentioned that I did not quite understand, and I'm not sure how it fits with this, is some outfit. If I understood it, they're circulating maps of flood zone problems in this city that are not either not correct, or I just didn't understand that part of it. And I'd sure like to have some understanding. Is that part of this issue or is that something else?
Mr. Mayor, I agree with you on that. And I I share that, would like some information on that as well. We have a sort of a companion agenda item at that 28th meeting, which is the Stormwater Master Plan. So it'll, I think it'll all kind of work together to.
Oh, great. Okay, thank you. Thank you. That's really helpful. I hope you'll find a way to sort of fill us in what's going on here. What what happened? Who is this first, whatever they were? Are these the guys that called me with the warranty to my car? You know, I want to know who these people are, what's going on?
Yeah, Mayor, just real quick, we we've never heard of them either. So so it must be some kind of private outfit doing something or other, but it's, I was I was communicating with Glenn while Mr. Shepherd was discussing that and we have not, we we don't know who these people are.
Hopefully, Mr. Shepherd can help us. Have a pretty good understanding of who they were. That was something we should be concerned about. So I think it'd be good to sort of make that a richer discussion and then we'll cap it with a vote on this thing, okay?
We'll do.
All righty, let's, oh, sorry, Counselor Kizer.
Thank you. Just very quickly, I'm going to recuse myself from this vote since I didn't participate in the public hearing last time and I did not have time to review the public hearings, so I'll be stepping away from this vote.
Okay, I was kind of hoping you'd get to vote because now you'd get to have a public hearing. Okay. So the recorder and please call a roll.
Counselor Lewis is absent. Counselor Kizer is recusing. Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Osik is absent. Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Motion passes. We will take this up at our next meeting. Okay, our final bit of business is public comment on issues not on the agenda, E M Easterly. What's up?
Good evening, Mayor Bennett, members of the council. I'm E M Easterly, Ward 8. This evening, I am publicly sharing portions of the email I sent you last Friday. I have come to realize that the questions I asked and the flaws I uncovered in this council's decision making processes are your responsibilities. My primary desire is and was to encourage Salem City Government to comply with its existing policies and codes. Your continuing silence demonstrates your reluctance to step up and enforce those codes and policies. It is you who abrogated your fiduciary and legal obligations by authorizing the illegal expenditure of S D C revenues last November. The land purchase you authorized alongside Wallace Marine Park is not a small pipes and ditches conveyance project. The expenditure authorized far exceeded the actual 5% Stormwater S D C conveyance project expenditure allocation. It is you who chose to accept the false statements, legal obfuscations and suborning silence of city staff. Sadly, eight members of this council compliantly followed staff's inadequately justified and unsupported recommendations. In my Friday email, I invited each council member to decide how best to correct your passive acceptance of the illegal staff recommendations and to correct the purposeful staff mis pardon me, misinterpretation of our city's codes and policies. Mayor Bennett and council members, this is your responsibility. I am asking you to affirm that your actions conform to adopted legal policies and procedures. Your silence is unacceptable. Please understand I do not intend to quietly back away from your failure to perform your fiduciary and legal obligations as a council or your failure to require transparency and procedural accountability of staff. Thank you for listening to me in this era of pandemic homelessness, destructive fires, social conflict and economic disruption. This issue appeals, appears, doesn't appeal, it appears small. But if this council to is unwilling to openly address its core legal obligations, our democracy is diminished.
Thank you, E M. Does anyone have any questions? Righty, Clifford Ifor Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. Clifford Ifor Rodriguez, Ward 6. Council Mayor, the reason I come in before you is because of the violence that occurred on Labor Day. I'm disappointed and I like confidence in the leadership of the city, both of the the mayor, the city manager, and of Chief Moore. Week after week, we spoke to that violence, the escalating violence of white extremists within our community, of hate within our community. Our community responded in many different ways, including putting together wonderful community events to show that Salem was a community that is based on love, respect, and that the fact that racism has no place in this community. But we also asked of the leadership of the city to speak out vocally and to make it clear that hate and racism has no place here. Unfortunately, no leadership was to be found. On Labor Day, we saw mob violence enacted by white extremists within our streets. Counselor Kizer spoke to questions about jurisdiction. Frankly, when it comes to law enforcement officers who are there as Salem P D were to provide mutual aid to Oregon State Police, they chose not to intercede several times. Beyond the mob violence, beyond that rush that we've seen in the videos, several people were assaulted, including myself, in the middle of Court Street. And now I, unfortunately, now I know that Court Street is under Salem P D's jurisdiction. Most importantly, Salem P D failed to act. So if they're going to be there, they either act or they don't. If we're going to have a chief of police who believes in law and order, a a mayor who believes in law and order and continues to espouse it, then act like it. Personally, I'm fed up with the lack of leadership in this community, the lack of defiance against white extremist groups who enact violence on your community members. Mayor, you are a community member with a leadership responsibility. City Manager Steve Powers, you you you're you're the functional part of it. Both of you ought to resign at this point. I do not have any confidence that you put any importance into this issue of of people getting hurt. I I don't know how how to make it clear. We've invited you to peaceful demonstrations. We've invited you to act on behalf of your community, and yet you continue to fail to act. I yielded my time.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. All right, any questions for Clifford?
I might just like to make a quick comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Clifford, thank you for for being on on tonight. I'm very sorry to hear about the harm that happened to you, especially over Labor Day weekend. It's very concerning, especially considering, you know, the what we are trying to do is, you know, Salem, it means peace. And when it comes to to racism, like that is not something that we want in our city. It's not something that is healthy and it's something that, you know, it's quite alarming especially to our black indigenous and people of color. We have to recognize that racism does exist and it is a public health hazard. And, you know, I hope that as as we move forward, that we'll be able to continue to to work together, however that looks like at this point, to help our communities heal and to help us move forward together. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? All right, then we are, unless there's something else, we are adjourned.